All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Adam Cummings, Chairman of tonight's meeting, and I'll call this meeting to order. It is a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Chi-Lai Zoning Board of Appeals. If you can please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight, our board members on my far left is Jim Weisner. On my immediate left is Matt Sinacola. Fred Trot is excused tonight. Philip Suprenald is on my far right. Side table, we have Paul Wanzanreed from the Building Department and Matthew Piston, our Assistant Town Counsel. Sandy Hewlett is our stenographer tonight. And you'll hear each application as they appear on the agenda. If you want a copy of it, it's on that cart back by the entrance. And at the conclusion of each public hearing, the board will have a discussion and a vote on each application. The applicant will receive a letter from the Building Department within a week of what our decision is. I do have to point out, in the event of an emergency, our exits are the entrance, the double doors you likely came in. The back doors go to the same hallway and out the front of the building. And these two doors, the emergency exits on the side, go to the rear of the building. And if you have a cellphone or pager, please silence that just to prevent any interruptions. All right. Board members, any issues with the signs?
I've noticed two. High Tree Lane, and that was, latest I checked, was today. And Turner Underground, but I saw something.
The application for High Tree would have been at 8 Lawn Rim Drive.
Oh.
The applicant's name was at 30 High Tree, but the property we're looking at tonight is 8 Lawn Rim.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. My bad. Turner, I saw something in the field, looked like a sign tipped over.
It tipped over. That tipped over and blew sideways, as did one of the Soul America at Archer Road, is what I noticed.
Did pick it back up again pretty quickly.
Oh, good. There was one visible and one got turned, so I'm glad they got corrected. All right. We'll move on to application number one. The application of Roderick A. Jones, trustee, 8 Carriage House Lane, Rochester, New York, 14624. The applicant/owner for a variance to erect an accessory structure, a shed to be 10 feet 0 inches by 12 feet 0 inches, proposed 5 foot 0 inches from the north side setback where 8 foot 0 inches is required at the property located at 8 Carriage House Lane, R-1-15 with incentive district. As your application is introduced, if you could please come to the podium and say your name and address for the record, anything else you'd like to add for the description of your application tonight? And that instruction goes to everybody when it's your turn as it comes up. Good evening.
Melinda Jones, and 8 Carriage House Lane is my address. Yeah, as it says with the application for the shed. I don't know what else to add.
That's fine if you don't have anything else to add. Once again, we're trying to, the code requires it to be from that property line. Let me see if I can get to a different cursor. Where my hand is up there, from that north property line, your code is requiring 8 feet. You're here for a variance to reduce it down to 5. That's pretty clear on that one. Jim, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Matt?
No questions.
Phil?
No questions.
Side table, anything? All right. And just to confirm, this is a 10-foot by 12-foot shed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak about this application? This application only at this time? Not seeing any hands. Ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? One condition of approval you'll have is to get a billing permit from the Building Department, which you've already applied for and been denied, so just continue on that process if it's approved tonight. And with that, I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence present this hearing, find this application to be a type 2 action and have no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval.
Emote.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes. So you're all set. Please continue to work with Paul and the Building Department to get the rest of your permit and get your shed installed.
So all I have to do is just apply again for the permit?
No, so you already applied?
Yeah.
So that's the part that's, so not everybody always applies every time. Most, 99.9% of the time, we get it now. But because you already applied and were denied, you don't have to reapply again. We just carry that over once you get the variance.
Okay.
So you're all set. You can go there tomorrow and meet with them to figure out the end of it, or next week, or whenever you'd like.
Okay.
Have a good day. Application number two, the application of Robert Waugh, 30 High Tree Lane, Rochester, New York, 14624. The applicant, Alan Waugh, 8 Lawn Rim Drive, Rochester, New York, 14624. The owner for a variance to erect a ramp 15 feet 0 inches, proposed to be 44 feet 0 inches south, from the south front setback where 60 feet 0 inches is required at the property located at 8 Lawn Rim Drive at the R-1-12 district. Good evening. Let me just bring up your application here. All right. Anything to add?
No, it's the property, I live on High Tree, but the property's on 8 Lawn Rim, so my parents' house, and it's just an accessibility ramp, so my dad can get it in.
Understood. So that's highlighted in yellow right there?
Yep.
All right. And once again, the 60-foot requirement is approximately where your house is. By the math, it's, your house is actually a foot closer. But that's pretty clear that you're looking for 44 feet and good description of, or picture of where you're looking to put the ramp. Do you have any questions?
No, I mean, you'd have started the ramp, obviously.
Yes, I have.
The application said that you hadn't, but you have started it already.
Yep. Yeah, I've had the footings already approved, and most of it's constructed. I was going to be putting in inspection for the final pretty soon.
Matt?
Nothing to add.
Just out of curiosity, were you just not aware that you had to come here first, and that came up when they came to do the inspections?
It was a timing thing. I actually put in a permit for it, didn't know that I needed a variance, was told I needed a variance, but I missed the previous month's meeting, so I followed up. But my dad is due to be coming home within a week to two, and it's the only way that he can get back in and out of the house.
Okay.
So it's kind of a, I don't have any other option.
Okay. Phil, any questions?
No questions.
Side table, anything to add? I will open up the public hearing for this application. Anyone interested in discussing this application? Not seeing any hands. Ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Same with the last one, get a billing permit, which you've already started that one. And I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence at this hearing, find this application to be a type 2 action and of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, I'd ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval.
Motion.
Okay. You made the motion. Second from Jim. Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so this is all set, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. You're welcome. Application number three, the application of Thomas Mans, 29 Bright Oaks Drive, Rochester, New York, 14624. The applicant/owner for a variance to erect an open porch to be 7 feet 0 inches by 11 foot 0 inches, proposed to be 50 feet 0 inches from the west front setback where 60 feet 0 inches is required at the property located at 29 Bright Oaks Drive in the R-1-15 district. Good evening.
Evening.
What's that? Oh, yeah, name and address, please.
Oh, Thomas Mans, 29 Bright Oaks Drive, 14624.
Okay. And once again, you're looking to have it reduced from 60 feet to 50 feet and replacing the picture that's up there of that front step. Yeah, sorry, it's not the easiest for me to rotate from page to page here. I'll do my best on that. I do want to make note that you do have several letters from your neighbors, so thank you for those. And that's what you're looking for right there, is adding on the front porch in the yellow, and you're going to be 50 feet off of Bright Oaks Drive, correct?
Yes.
All right. Jim, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Matt?
No questions.
I also do not have any questions. Phil doesn't have any? Side table, anything to add? I will go ahead and open up the public hearing for this application. Not seeing any interested hands. Ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. On this one, same with the first two, you'll have a condition of approval to get a building permit, which you've already started. Just make sure you close that out and get everything you need for that. And I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence, present this hearing, find this application to be a type 2 action and have no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so you're all set. Thank you for coming in. Have a good night. Application number four is the application of Hartman Renovation Incorporated, Brian J. Hartman, 176 Edgerton Street, Rochester, New York, 14607. The applicant, Jael Singh, 29 Trestle Trail, North Chi-Lai, New York, 14514. The owner for a variance to erect an accessory structure, detached garage 12 feet 0 inches by 25 feet 0 inches, A, proposed to be 5 feet 0 inches from the northwest side setback where 8 feet 0 inches is required, and B, proposed to be 5 feet 0 inches from the southwest rear setback where 8 feet 0 inches is required at the property located at 29 Trestle Trail in the R-1-12 district. Good evening.
Hi, Brian Hartman for 29 Trestle Trail. My address is 176 Edgerton Street. There's one change. We were going to move the, it's 5 foot on the one side. The neighbor asked if we could move it over 10, 5 more feet, so it's not going to be 5, it's going to be 10 feet from the neighbor's property.
Okay. Well, that was going to be one of my questions. So on the, you're saying on this?
Right there, yes.
That side, so therefore, we're going to eliminate that requested setback, which is letter, that'd be the north, that'd be the southwest one. So letter B, we're going to reduce at the applicant's request. So that's no longer necessary to be considered, because you'll be code compliant, because you're supposed to be 8 feet. So just to point it out to you, it's nice to oblige the neighbor to have it 10 feet off. The code would require 8.
Yes.
Okay.
And the existing shed that's back there is going to be torn down?
Yes.
It's actually sitting off the, over the property line, I guess.
Okay. That's good.
He didn't put it up, he bought the house last year, and we just found that out when we applied for the permit, that that was actually built without a permit and over the property line.
Well, I'm glad that's getting corrected as well. Jim, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Matt?
Just clarification, north, the southwest?
Yes, letter B, the southwest variance request is being...
That's the side.
Yeah, I'm going off the north there. The way they're referenced up there is northwest and southwest because of how strange, so it's going to be the side, not the rear.
Is it lists, we've got it advertised as the northwest as a side setback and the southwest as a rear setback?
Yeah, that's flip-flopped. Paul, would you agree with that one?
Yeah.
Good touch.
I'll make sure we're...
Yep. So once again, we're looking at a setback. I mean, they're both 8 feet. But yes, it's technically, at this point, it's going to be a rear setback, northwest rear setback. All right. Any other questions? All set, Matt?
That's it.
Phil?
No question.
You're all set. Side table, anything to add?
No.
I will open up the public hearing for this application?
Application?
Excuse me? Yes.
Hi, it's the Daily, 27 Trestle Trail. Thank you, guys. Seeing us focused, seeing on that. The only question we have is the height of the structure. I mean, a shed can be, like, a minor shed, it's only 8 feet.
We aren't hearing an application of it today, I believe.
For variance.
Yeah, this is just for the area variance part. I checked with the Building Department.
We're going to do 8-foot walls, then only a slight pitch, the lowest pitch we have on.
Answered.
So, well, thank you for answering that, but yeah.
It's clear, it's just 8 feet now, I'm not...
From the side, yep.
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 No problem.
Okay. What's that? Oh, yes. Miss, can I have your name?
Callie Newley, 27 Trestle Trail.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing any other interested parties. I will make a motion, or ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's been closed. One condition of approval, you'll have to get a building permit. And I will go ahead and declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence present this hearing, find this application to be a type 2 action and have no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval.
Motion.
We have a motion. Second?
Second.
Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes. So this is all set. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight. To the Daily family. All right. Application number five, the application of Thornton Engineering LLP, Glenn Thornton, 30 Assembly Drive, Suite 106, Mendon, New York, 14564. The applicant, Cook Properties, 90 Air Park Drive, Suite 400, Rochester, New York, 14624. The owner for a variance to erect a fence 6 feet 0 inches in height, proposed in the front yard where 4 feet 0 inches is allowed at the property located at 90 Air Park Drive in the GB District. Just get to that.
Rocky Gradidaria, on behalf of 90 Air Park Drive.
Okay. So where my hand is going is where you're proposing 6-foot tall?
Correct.
And just to point out, in the rear of the property, the adjoining property has a 6-foot-tall fence along its side in the rear of this lot. And then there's a 6-foot fence west of it. That addresses 50 Air Park Drive, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Jim, any questions?
No. I mean, what is, you feel the need is for the 6-foot-tall fence? I mean, obviously, you're trying to protect equipment on the one property, but the other one is just storage.
Yeah, so they want to match the proposed variance, or the accepted variance at 50 Air Park, so that those fences align at 6 feet. And then they're going to have a 30-foot motorized gate there as well for protecting their weekends and nights.
So protecting the people who are storing stuff in, what is it, 50 Air Park?
Correct. The flag out back.
Securing the equipment at 90.
Yep. Added layer of protection.
Okay. Good question. Matt?
The chain link, it's just the chain link fence, it's not going to have screening, visual screening slats?
Correct.
That's it.
All right. Okay. I don't have any questions. Phil?
I don't have any questions.
Side table, anything to add?
Same owner.
At 50 and 90.
All right. I will open up the public hearing for this application. Not seeing any interested parties. I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
A motion? Is there a second? A second? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will declare the zoning board as lead agency. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, the RG&E site, do they have a variance?
I don't know. I didn't go back in the file on them.
I meant to ask the Building Department.
Typically, they wouldn't even come to us because they would claim their public utility status, and that would be it. But do you know, Paul, offhand, does, that, because I think it's that and the, in that area, the Monroe County Operations Center, I don't think they came to us either. So RG&E seems to think they're still a public utility.
Say the operations center where the fire department's trained, or...
You've got that one and across the street. And then, of course, the airport across the street. But, no, I don't, I didn't look it up, so I can't speak for certain it is.
Just curious.
I'll declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence present this hearing, find this application to be an unlisted action and no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those, or, yes, board vote, all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then I ask for a motion to adopt this application?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so that one's all set. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
All right. The application number six, the application of Turner Underground Installations Incorporated, 1891 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14623. The applicant/owner for a variance to propose nine parking spaces where 43 spaces are required at the property located at 1891 Scottsville Road in the LI District.
Good evening. My name is Ed Martin. I'm a licensed engineer with DDS representing the application. We did appear before the planning board recently and received site plan approval condition on your approval of this variance request. The only thing I'll add that isn't already included in the application is that this poses no change, no impact to the neighbors, to the town, or the environment, so it's pretty simple in overall.
All right. Once again, it's just these nine spots here off to the side for the new building, the warehouse addition.
Yes, sir.
Not to say in addition, the additional building that serve warehouse purposes.
Right.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
So this, this just applies to the number of parking spaces for the new building. Obviously, the old building already contains its number of parking spaces.
Correct. And ironically, this actually ends up adding more spaces, because if you've been to the site over the last couple of years, they're using more and more of the perimeter for equipment storage, which is the purpose for the warehouse, so it frees up some of those spaces. But he's not adding staff, so there's not an increased demand at all.
And how many people currently work there?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. But there's no problem with the amount of parking on this?
Correct. Plenty of parking. Been there multiple times and never see plenty of vacant spaces.
Okay. Matt?
Yeah, I guess I was just going to echo, there's a lot of exterior storage going on now with equipment and interior, so that part of the idea is to capsulate that into one of the buildings?
To get it inside, and I don't know if the board's aware of this, but a year or two ago, we got a storage yard approved on Valentine for them. So, and that's finished, in the final stages, so that'll be used as well.
And then, along with this, I know our code requires 43. I just wanted to make point that it is nice that we don't have the C of asphalt or gravel if you don't need it.
Right. So we do land bank parking, exactly.
Yep. Phil? Any questions?
No questions.
Side table, anything to add? I will open up the public hearing for this application. Not seeing anybody interested for that. Ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I will go ahead and declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information evidence present at this hearing, find this application to be unlisted action and of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd ask for a motion to adopt this application?
Motion.
A motion? Second? I'll second it. Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Matt? Matt?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right. Application number seven, the application of Soul America Energy, 190 Ottley Drive, Northeast Studio H, Atlanta, Georgia, 30324. The applicant, Cole Capital Six LLC, Sabash Coley, 2590 West Ridge Road, Suite 10, Rochester, New York, 14626. The owner, fair variance on screening and visibility of A, 80 feet zero inch required west rear setback with no proposed fully landscape buffer, where 50 feet zero inch fully landscape buffered is required in addition to the 80 foot zero inch west rear setback for 130 foot zero inch total. B, the 40 foot zero inch required north side setback with proposed 20 foot zero inch landscape buffer within the setback where 50 feet zero inches is required, fully landscape buffer in addition to the 40 foot zero inch north side setback for a total of 90 feet zero inches at the property located at 243 Archer Road at the LI District. Let me just get to yours real quick.
I think of our plan on that tab.
I have to go to his graphic. That's right.
Yeah.
Somewhat in there. Your font seems to have, with this PDF reader, some of it's gray and some of it's black.
It's an eye test, I guess.
Yeah.
I can explain it if that would be helpful for the board, too. So my name's Joe Hens. I'm with Ingles and Associates. We're the civil EOR for this project. I also have Harrell Johnson from Soul America and Henry Zummerfeld with Hodgson Russ, the attorney representing this project. So essentially, what you see on that plan in front of you is what we're looking for, for the setback and the vegetation variances. We really honed in on that northwest corner because you can see the junction of both of the setbacks. The code requires the underlying zoning district setback. In addition, they also require a 50-foot vegetated buffer. We provide that buffer and that additional setback in addition to the additional residential setback for the residential homes on Archer Road and on Beaver Road Extension. By granting this variance, it really lets us push the project closer to the existing industrial use at American Packaging, just to our west, that's our neighbor, and to the vacant land closer to the north. So we're minimizing any residential impacts as much as possible and really optimizes the footprint for our project. There is existing deciduous vegetation to the west of the project, and we call it that tree line on the plan in front of you. The width of that varies, you know, 30-plus or minus feet generally. It's all deciduous. You know, it's more mature trees. And in addition to that, actually on their own property, American Packaging has some screening plantings that they've planted as well. So we really felt anything that we put in there would be superfluous and not really, you know, benefit anyone, especially since you're trying to screen the side of a warehouse. So again, this lets us push as far to the west as possible, as far away from the homes on Archer Road as possible. And then additionally, we also are still providing screening to the north. There is quite a bit of relief across the site looking south, so we're picking up a lot of additional screening just from that elevation change. So we didn't feel that the full width of 50 feet was really necessary. This is more a discussion for the planning board, but we did provide them line of sight. And even at eight feet, you get quite a bit of screening with just the elevation change. So, you know, that's our underlying argument for the variances. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
My first one is, I know you did line of sight, but especially in the winter months when there's no foliage on the deciduous trees, did you look at a glare angle study of the lower angle of it? Since you don't have solar arrays that are going at a direct angle, you have the wavy ones.
Yeah.
There's going to be instances on low horizon sunsets coming from the west that could hit those and then impact the houses on the residential to the east. Did you evaluate that or no?
We did evaluate the...
Not line of sight, but just to see the...
No, I understand. Yeah. For the glare studies, we use, and it's the industry standard tool, it's an FAA tool, I think it's called SAGA. We did look at glare. There was no serious instance of glare. They divide into green glare, yellow glare, red glare. Red glare would be the most worst-case scenario that's hazardous for your health. I think we had some instances of green glare in the winter months. But again, you're talking about really early in the morning, a very short duration, maybe, you know, five to 10 minutes maximum.
I just speak because I know the town of Chilis is going to get the calls from the neighbors. You're not, so that's why I just want to ask the question. Even though you say it's green, it doesn't happen. To them, it might not be green, so I just wanted to make sure it was evaluated. Because that's part of why we're trying to get buffer around all four sides on these type of projects. It's a newer style or a newer code for us here in this town, but...
Understood. And if you look at the plan that's provided with the full package, I think the full site plan is provided. It actually shows the full 50-foot width screening that we're providing around the whole project. So this is kind of misleading if you're looking at just this. It looks like a very small section of trees that we're planting. We're actually planting over 300 evergreen trees around the whole project, including the full 50 width vegetated buffer on the most sensitive areas, which, you know, to us would be Archer Road, Beaver Road Extension. So the full south and the full westerns, or eastern side of the project. Yeah.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
I'm wondering what drawing you're looking at because I don't remember seeing that. What's down in the corner as far as the drawing?
What's that? When you say in the full view? This we just got tonight. That's up on the screen.
Yes. To clarify, I prepared this for this meeting.
We just got this tonight.
I prepared this as a, you know, a presentation item for tonight's meeting just to really hone in on what those setbacks are. But the setbacks were included on the site plan.
It's not what I see in the package.
Yeah. It's the same information that's in the package. It's just blown up in that corner.
So again, what's the red line is the what you're proposing for a setback?
Well, sort of.
The red line is the setback?
Yes. The red line is the setback, and then there's a buffer in addition to that.
And the black line is...
And so what they're asking for is not to go up to the black line. They're just asking to go to the red line.
So it goes vegetation buffer and then setback? What's the 40-foot setback? And then, okay, and then the black one's a vegetation buffer?
Yeah. The black line would be the underlying zoning setback, including the vegetated buffer. It's 50-foot width, essentially just an offset of 50 feet.
Right.
I mean, one thing that appears to do with the middle...
You don't want to put in, on the west side, you don't want to put in any landscaping. You just want to use the existing buffer.
They want to use the existing, yes, hedgerow.
Vegetation. On the north side, they're going to put landscaping in, but they want it within the setback.
Instead of in the buffer.
Or to in addition to the setback.
Right. Because they've got solar array, solar apparatuses.
Yeah. It's kind of a unique parcel because it's also bisected by that channel that runs, you know, diagonally through the site. So we're trying to keep everything on the one side. Technically, our envelope would push things up. You know, we could build on the other side, but we're trying to avoid moving things closer to Archer Road as much as possible.
Right. And once again, if you took the solar arrays that are between the black line and the red line, I believe you said Atlanta, one of the meetings, is that this would not be a viable project if you had to eliminate those.
Correct. Yeah. It's already a very small project, you know, for community solar. I believe it's just three megawatts, right? Yeah.
I think in the literature presented, you indicated a six to seven acre buildable space to make it viable per megawatt, I believe, or something of that name. I think it was the standard.
Yeah, I think it was.
Standard, when you're talking acreage for a facility, your planning factor is five acres per megawatt.
Okay. Five, okay. Because I've heard as much as 10 in some cases, so to your credit, I guess it's on the low end or the more extreme end.
Yeah. You know, this project's gone through several redesigns. At one point, we had, we were using tracking panels, which would be more typical than what you'd see in this area. This is actually a different type of panel, so it allows us to... It's called planted solar. It allows us to build a more condensed array and decrease the footprint.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Henry Zummerfeld from Hodgson Russ. I don't want to take us off track of the engineering and the visual side of things, but I just want to put on the record and frame the board, now that you've had an opportunity to review everything, as this is a solar project and consistent with New York state law, this will be governed by the public utility variance standard. So it's different than the traditional balancing under 267B. I'm seeing nods from the board, so you're familiar with that standard. I just wanted to put it on the record as far as the analysis that should be performed on these area variances. And also note, in framing where things are procedurally, you know, the planning board already granted the negative declaration on the site plan and the special use permit. As this is an area variance, you know, the board will conduct its own determination. But, you know, there's going to be very limited impacts. It's already been determined, and the standard that applies is a less onerous and less stringent standard than would typically apply. So if there are questions on that, I'm happy to walk through all the nuance of New York law or otherwise address any questions that may come up from the public.
Okay. Thank you. Speaking with this side of the table, any more questions? Not to single you out, Phil.
Most of the existing, it looks like most of the existing north vegetated buffer is... I think some of it's off the property.
Yeah, most of it's off the property.
Correct, which is wide to the north. We are still proposing screening. It's just 20 feet wide versus the 50 feet required by code.
Matt, I assume is your security fence that...
Yeah, that line with the circles on it. Yep.
It's on the railroad right of way?
Yeah. You've got railroad right of way, and Monroe County has a strip of land, and then it goes to the Archer Road property owned by the town.
Correct. So we're south of that.
Theoretically, the railroad could hit that down.
Oh, yeah.
Because they own that.
Yep.
So it's not really permanent.
Right. Which is why they're proposing new ones.
What's in the county?
That's the main trunk line that goes to GCO.
So that could be cleared entirely if necessary.
It probably should be, but those roots are happy going down 20 feet to that sewer main. Anything else? Not this time. Phil?
We haven't received any other public or neighbor reactions.
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. Side table, anything to add? Not seeing any. I'll open up to a public hearing for this application.
My name is Dan Moore.
Yes.
9621 Paul Road. Is there a diagram of what it's going to look like behind the factory or whatever this would be, land-wise?
I don't have it in this package. Do you guys have a graphic of it with you here? I mean, there's not really, it's to the side of APC package. It won't be behind.
Okay, so it...
So...
The town is doing a part.
Yep. And then you've got the railroad. Most people, you can't recognize that there's a sewer main that goes in there, but that's why the railroad is as wide as it is. It's not all railroad property. But then, south of the railroad, you've got this parcel, which is just a fallow field right now. It looks like a meadow. And then you've got, to the west of that, is the APC building. This is going in, if you looked...
Like right behind?
So it's not to say behind. If you're on Archer Road, it'll be in front of it, in front of APC. And from Beaver Road, it's, from the extension, it's to the side of it. From Beaver Road Extension, it's to the east of it.
I have an overall site plan that I could put up on the board.
Sure. But to describe it, it's, as you come down Archer Road, it's the empty property that's there that's got a pretty...
I saw that you clarified that they know how big it was going to be.
It's, so from where the... So there's a line that's drainage, a line with all the extra tall trees or weeds that, the weeds that are in there. It's behind, be behind those because that drainage ditch and the oil pipeline or the gas pipeline that's below it crosses it in half, that parcel in half. Yep.
And there's going to be some screening proposed if it goes along Archer and along Beaver. And it's more than 30 feet away from the dark.
Does that help orient you of where you're at? So if you're stopped at the railroad tracks, if you're heading north...
Railroad tracks are where?
Up at the...
Upper right-hand corner.
Yep. So at the upper right-hand corner, if you were stopped at the train and the gates were down and you look to your left, half of that field would still be the fallow field or the meadow that's there. And then the back half of that big lot is where the solar array would be. The solar array's not all the way up to the Archer roadside. It goes to that drainage ditch that splits that parcel in half. Yeah, that would help her. We have it in the old, in the last meeting packet, but not this meeting packet.
This is Archer Road? Because I go to Living Waters, and I just want to know how far away this is.
It's quite a ways from Living Waters.
Black Creek is far away?
Oh, yeah.
Black Creek?
Yep. Yeah, it's quite a ways away from Black Creek.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
The visual drawings show the young trees, so eventually those are going to grow up.
On the north side, yes. Yep. They'll have them on the east side, south side, and north side, but they're not proposing anywhere. Yep.
Yeah. And one of the benefits on the north side, too, obviously, is there's not going to be an issue with shading, so those can just grow. You know, they're not going to impact the solar array.
Will the existing hedgerow on the west side present a problem in the future? I mean, it's not too massive at the moment.
I don't think there's been a detailed shading analysis done, but like you said, it's not too tall, and most of it's not on our property, so they don't have the ability to cut it even if they wanted to.
Did you say most of it's not on your front?
Yeah, I was going to say your graphic shows.
It's, oh, it's like split. We're showing, you know, a portion of it on the north corner, but there's also, like I mentioned earlier, some evergreen screening that's on the neighboring property that's not even on our property.
And you don't want to put any supplemental on your side on that west side?
No.
So you want no vegetated, no new vegetated buffer. You're using the existing one, but in the, once again, it's beating a dead horse, but you're putting it in our setback area and not having a separate vegetated buffer?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I will... Yep?
Or does Grant their variance so that the applicant understands they're still responsible for that hedgerow?
Yes, you still have to provide screening on the west side.
Okay, so they'd be responsible for just, you know, leaving that as is and not trimming it or anything?
Well, it would have to provide screening.
If it dies.
So if it dies, it has to be replaced. Right.
It has to be replaced.
Right.
Okay.
Say that one more time. You have to maintain that hedgerow appropriately.
So it has to be a screened landscape buffer or a screened landscape element. I won't call it a buffer because it confuses with the code. You have to have trees screening the property to the west. If the existing hedgerow gets trimmed or dies off or anything, it needs to be replaced with a replacement landscaping.
Is that a condition?
Yeah, I'd like to put that as a condition. So landscaping is required on the west side for the life of this solar array. And once again, to make sure it's clear on that one, if the existing starts thinning out, if you have a whole bunch of ash trees in there and they come down, you need to replace that screening element on that west side with new plantings.
Would that be a replacement in kind or will we continue the scheme?
Yeah, most likely be. I'm not going to say, we can't really require a landscaping, a species landscaping plan, but yes, it'd be in kind and recognizing that it would take 15 to 20 years to catch up.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure it's clear that we want, we want trees all the way around it. Even though it is industrial next door, they have to put trees in to protect that property next door.
Understood.
So we want to do the same thing on this one.
Is there a height restriction or...
A requirement? Are required?
It's kicked in in some cases, not this particular application, but...
I don't know how we would do that. And the trees now are taller, and it's to their detriment if the trees get too tall. That's going to...
That's kind of why I brought it up earlier, is that you can see a scenario in the future where they may grow to be such a height where they do have some visual, you know, shady impact on the array. And I suppose that's something they could back.
Right.
And have to get permitted.
Right. Or if the trees do thrive and grow too fast, then it's up to them to replace those again, to make sure it's controlled and not detrimentally impacting their production rate.
They have the right, the authority to do that?
Mm-hmm. It's their property.
Okay.
All right. So there will be, one condition of approval is you'll have to get a building permit.
Yep.
But you've already, you're going through with the site plan part of it. And that landscaping is required on that west side of the property for the life of that solar array. Once again, the hedgerow can be used to count for some of that credit, but it needs to be stayed or remain a screening, an established screening element between the two properties, much like you're doing on that. All right?
Understood.
All right. Yep.
We're required to have screening.
Yep.
They are required to have screening. If the trees, for some reason, that we're trying to take advantage of die, we both have an interest in having requirements for them. We're trying to benefit from them, so I, yeah, we can no doubt take them, but it is a joint effort, right?
Yes.
We have a responsibility to have screening, so...
Oh, yeah.
I can go and say, hey, we've got this. We're willing to help cover this if we're trying to benefit from the screening.
I would absolutely encourage conversation between the two. And once again, they have to maintain their landscaping on their side. If those pine trees do die, they have a responsibility to maintain those and get those replaced as well.
Okay.
Okay. I'll declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information that's presented at this hearing, to be an unlisted action and no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt this application with those two conditions of approval.
Motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Board vote. Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so you're all set with this.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's going to cover all of them, just to clarify. There was both of them in one. All right. Moving on to minutes. Anybody with questions on the minutes from last month?
Yeah, on the second page, maybe it's a question for Sandy.
Bring it up.
There's a, there's somebody that speaks but doesn't say anything. I don't know if that was intended or...
So we'll check on that one. Do you want to wait until next month to approve it or...
It's sort of mixed and above.
You think it's more of a typographical?
I don't know.
What you've got feeling on that one?
I don't know if there was anything missing in there. I guess if there's nothing in there, then I guess...
Okay.
Why would it be there?
Not to put you on the spot, can you go to the second page?
I'm sure second page is probably not, maybe the second page here, but she... So it is from number one, the application. It is 1, 2, 3, 4. Wait a minute, I'm on the wrong page here. That wouldn't be helpful.
So under the comments are questions for...
Yeah, so...
I'm just trying to wrap this up.
Actually, it's the, on the second page. Is this the second page?
Does it say who's... Does it say who's, it doesn't have a name?
It has Mr. Wixton, and I'm, I'm the one below it.
Wixton?
So, it goes Adam, Phil, me, Mr. Wixton, Adam, Mr. Wixton, Adam, Mr. Wixton, nothing, and then me.
Okay, after, what that, after we're screening, nothing?
Oh, I see where he might have...
He just made a terrible sound.
Yeah, he could've just said like, yes or no.
Or nothing.
Or nothing.
If someone starts talking, someone's gonna spot that that happens.
Yeah, he might've just made a noise, because there wasn't a question added there, so... Sorry, sir. No, no, that's okay, I, I just wanted to clarify for the record and for my notes, we, of course, we're grateful to the board for granting the applications. What standard did the board apply in granting them? Was it the public utility or the other standard? It was the public utility, we didn't do the weighting of the five factors. That's fine, I wanted to be clear from my record, and then we could get a copy of the resolution from the clerk. Yes. Thank you very much. You didn't find anything else on that, Sandy, so, okay with the...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I ask for a motion to accept and approve these minutes from last month?
Motion.
All second? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So, that's all set?
Because I wasn't here.
Oh, that's right, so you abstain, I forgot you weren't here. You were out of the country. So, now we'll move on to, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Meeting adjourned.